Jasmine, will you take the vote?
Mark Doyle.
Yeah.
Amy Bonadere. Bijra Houston. Tom LaCount.
Here.
Jamie Facon.
Here.
Brian Berrien.
Here.
Excellent. All right. So, conflict of interest disclosures. I know that Amy Bonadere had conflict, which is often on the meeting. So that takes care of that. Is there anyone else with conflicts? If there should be any that you realize later on, let us know. Otherwise, we'll go forward. And the proof of the meeting notice went out on time. Thank you very much. Any bills and communications to talk about? And for approval of one minute. So everybody had a chance to look at them and what their comments or changes. If not, make a motion.
Make a motion to approve prior month's meeting minutes.
Thank you, Jamie.
I'll second.
Brian Berrien.
Approved.
Jamie Facon.
Approved.
Tom LaCount.
Approved.
Mark Doyle.
Approved. Shane, would you give us the report from the treasurer and the financial report?
Looking at the balance sheet as of October 31st, 2025, we have cash of 2.5 million. Down below, we also have outstanding liability, which is a pilot refund of almost 41,000. And that check has been sent out. Looking at the P and L, we have revenue of 180,000 to a budget of 309,000. We're on trade right now at 129,000, and this is before pilot payments were sent out. Recorded, though. Expenditures, we have total expenses of 506,000 to a budget of 747,000. So far, we're favorable by 241,000. We should be just on target, maybe a little over on the expense, but it would be offset from the fees above on other. Because a couple of the professional services, like this impact study was 8,500 not budgeted, but we're getting it returned up above in the fees. We have a net loss of 325,000 to a budgeted net loss of 438,000. So far, we're favorable by 113,000 to budget. Any questions?
Thank you. So do I understand then that you are projecting expenses to be...
Pretty much on target. We may be off just a little because we did have our professional services was a little higher than budgeted.
All right. Mr. Amandola is not here yet. Would you like to check and see?
I'll check.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just... Thank you. Are there any reports for committees? None and unfinished business? None. Okay, I should go through them carefully. So.
I'm trying to turn the page.
Perfect timing.
Just have a seat at the end of the table. Thanks so much.
Good morning, Joe. How are you?
Good morning, Mr. Amandola.
Good morning.
So this item is under new business. It's for the consideration and approval of final authorizing resolution for the town center developments. I will see to approve the project for providing mortgage tax exemption, sales tax exemption, and a pilot for approximately $4 million for the construction and development of a mixed-use residential commercial building at 1189 Route 55 on approximately 1.19 acres. And we had been waiting for you to complete the processes in town, which sounds like they now are. And glad to be at this point, so you can get ahead. Are... Would you like to discuss?
I'll talk a little bit about the project.
Project a bit?
November 5th, we had the public hearing, and that all went well. It's posted on the website as well as the transcript. And we'll talk a little bit more about the project. And then we'll give Mr. Amandola some time to share his comments as well. So adding on to Mark's comments, this will be a three-story mixed-use project, which will be converting a vacant lot. There's proposed 14 residential units and a mix of studios, 1, 2, and 3s. Is that...
They've recently switched it to like one, just ones and twos?
Just ones and twos?
Yeah, because the way the layout of the wall worked, it was kind of just like give someone privacy, you know? It just worked out fine.
Okay.
Give space for like a television on the inside. So it kind of just lent itself to work out better.
Okay, okay. And this will be adding units to our housing stock, which we know is high priority here in the county. And so with that, Mr. Amandola, did you want to share anything else?
No, that's pretty much like that is the whole project, really. I'm personally excited for it just because like I think I've told you guys, but you guys probably hear a lot of these. Like I live right there on that loop of Lauer, combined Century 21. Been there since I was 23. My office is right by the post office. I'm always going on those roads. Like I wanted to come out like really nice. Excuse me. But yeah, I'm really excited about it. It's been taking quite some time, but I think it's gonna take like another spot that is just looks like, you know, it looks like a rundown vacant lot, like kind of where my office was, where they did the gas station. Now it's like a nice looking Dunkin' Donuts, and it's kind of connecting sidewalk to sidewalk. So I think it's kind of like the next obvious step for the town center. And I think it's gonna work out well. I think it'll be a good location for residents. You have Arlington School District, you have the Conic right there. It's only for commercial, and I haven't advertised anything really far as like doing it yet because you, you know, can fall through. So but whoever's heard about it has been asking me, and they seem interested. So I think it's gonna be a really good project. It's just, you know, it's taking a little bit of time. Do you guys have any like specific questions on it or like?
No, but I actually wanted to go back a step or two because I realized that now perhaps the two of you have met already, but maybe, maybe not. This is Robin Mack who's on.
I know. Hearing it.
And it's a public hearing.
Hearing, okay, excellent. So you did.
Yes.
And but for whoever's also watching in the, in the great TV world.
I'll take a few moments to introduce myself. I've, I've been here since November 3rd, and I feel as though I've been part of the team for quite some time. So excuse my manners for not introducing myself. I am Robin Mack. I am the newly appointed executive director of the Industrial Development Agency. I have multiple years of municipal executive, executive director experience for an industrial development agency prior to coming year. Have spent lots and lots of years, more than I care to express, in compliance, fraud management, business development, as well as, yeah, municipal government operations. And so I'm grateful to now be part of the team and leading the team and looking forward to us doing some great things. Thanks for that opportunity, Mark.
No, thank you. Sorry to have not...
Well, we've, I've been, it feels like I've, you know.
Exactly, that's why.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We've been working together and...
Absolutely.
There we go. No, good. Glad to, to hear that progress is going along finally. And if there are no further questions, we'll look for a motion and, and a second.
I do have a question. You said approvals of the Grangeftown Board and the school district?
I think we're just waiting for the final on Board of Health. They had some comments because they don't have the sewer in that area of the range. So we had to like re-engineer some of the septic because there's also, I don't know if you guys are familiar with like Coltech Systems for stormwater now. So it was kind of tight the way it worked out. So we're waiting on that, but we have the Seeker approval. And I was talking to Alan the other day, and like it seems as though everything is like right there. So it's been, it is almost two years now. So hopefully this is getting pretty much almost done.
That will see that aspect, but the pilot approval for...
Oh, yes. Sorry, guys. Yes, yeah, that was the fifth. Yeah, it's...
It was ten-year pilot agreement, so it doesn't go through the process of the additional...
It's a 10-year.
Yeah, as far as I understand it, like kind of conforms perfectly, so.
But the question was, you have municipal blessing?
Yes, yes. Sorry, I was...
And this is the, this is the lot that's in between really Zoe's and the new Dunkin', right?
Yeah, there's Skidmore has that, like Skidmore.
Right.
A little extension where they cut it off in the Conic. That's like one edge of the property, and Zoe's is the other. It used to be Kelly Steaks and Spirits for years, yeah.
Is there a sidewalk there now?
No, what?
I don't think, I mean, the kids, you see a lot of Arlington traffic from the kids.
I think they stopped it.
At Zoe's?
At Zoe's. I think since the roundabouts, anytime someone's made development, like my office, I have a sidewalk in the back that goes to nowhere, and then I have the sidewalk in the front that continues. And I think it's, I think it stops, and they have two sides of the parking lot. So we're gonna run that sidewalk across the whole property. And then we'll have one DOT entrance, I think it looks like now, not two.
All right, so I would like to make a motion to approve the final authorization resolution, authorizing resolution for the Town Center Development LLC and the tenor of Grange.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Jasmine, will you take the vote first?
Tom LaCount.
Approved.
Jamie Facon.
Approved.
Brian Berrien.
Approved.
Mark Doyle.
Approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Very well.
Ross, eh?
Yes.
Sounds good. Thank you. Guys, thank you so much for your help with this process.
Like to see it built.
Yeah. I'm sure I'll see you guys soon. Take care.
Seems like someone who's got to get on and get it done quickly.
He's got a nice building, officer.
Yeah. All right. I think that Robin is just gonna bring Mr. Stanger in. Good morning, Mr. Stanger.
Good morning.
All persons. Hi, too. Perhaps you've just introduced yourself, but this is Robin Mack, I'm the executive director.
Very good to meet you. We had a few moments when you entered to greet one another. I am Robin Mack. I am the executive director of the Industrial Development Agency. And thank you for being here today representing Jackson's Crossing, the amended application for benefits through the Industrial Development Agency. We understand that the project is seeking mortgage recording tax exemption as well as sales tax exemption.
That's correct.
But not a pilot.
That's correct.
Did you want to take a few minutes now to share some comments about the project?
Steve Tinkelman is away. As he do this, he does this much better than I do. Keep this really short because I think that's all that's necessary. I was here maybe a month, month and a half ago. The project itself has not substantially changed since that date. The commoine reports that you had in front of you remain in full force and effect and part of this record. They demonstrate the economic benefit to the community of this project. Two things have changed. One is that after that, after the determination made by your board with respect to the, before the pilot, my clients went back to the table and got out their pencils, sharpened them. And between determining that they would have to invest more of their own capital and getting some bids in, they've been able to cover the difference or lessen the impact of failure of the pilot. The second thing that happened, which I wish had happened before I came here, is I was only on the job for about a month the last time I saw you folks. After that vote, I contacted Mr. Supple, who is the village's attorney, discussed the vote with him, discussed the importance of the project and the village's position on it. That was a factor that was very important when I was here. And at the end of the conversation, it was, let's walk away from the pilot. Pilot, we sharpen our pencils, but we still need the sales tax and the mortgage tax. What will your client say? What will it do to communicate that? And I've seen the letter that the village has sent to here saying that they have no objection to the grant of this request today. So I think those are the material changes. They're not, I think the village's position is significant. I think that getting the pencils out and looking at this a little differently after that vote, I can't say we should have done it beforehand because I wasn't there beforehand, but we've done it now, and we've come back, and this is an amended application based on that record. Nothing else is changing. If you have questions, I probably won't be able to answer, but ask anyway. I can get Steve on the phone. He's somewhere in the islands, but if you take it from there. Yes. So the, since that time in preparation for this, there has been an additional effort to check, as we always do, the reasonability of the, of the project and to see whether the, the changes that you speak of and also the elimination of the pilot materially affects the feasibility and the reasonability of the, of the project. So for this, there was an additional commoine effort. And my, my read of that is that the prospect of, of profits is somewhat lower than it was projected previously, but clearly you are here and are accepting of that, your Mr. Tinkelman is, as you're representing. Does, if anybody have any sort of questions on that, the reasonability test? Because I think this is the, Ron, go again.
No, just for clarification, you said sharpen the pencils, but the, you did make material changes to lower the cost also.
Yes.
Which I think is an extremely important point. And that is factored into the, the new test. And it's okay back positive.
Sharpen the pencils, I meant it both ways. And how much more can you put in to make this work? And how much less can we make it cost to make this work?
There's been material changes to the project cost that were factored into the, the new test, and it returned positive.
It was about 2.8 million.
Yeah.
On the project cost from the September submission till now.
Yep.
If I'm reading it correctly. Good. No, but also like Mr. Stanger said, the commoine economic and fiscal impact report is very enlightening. It's one of the first times I've ever seen that report. And just alone, with, what is it, 56 or 58 units? You know, they're, they're talking about 46 new people into the county and their spending habits, and, and you're almost recouping that stimulus that we're gonna give them or award them if we do, that they're gonna get that back, the village, the county, and, and the spending habits of the 46 out of tenors that they're projecting using national standards. So I think it's really a no-brainer. Plus the fees, which I was shocked that the applicant paid to the town official for the recreation, which is not of the ordinary, but I think it was 220,000.
Yeah, I mean, to the village.
Right. So I, I think it's a one-win, and let's get this lot built.
Good. Tom? Brian? I'm good. James?
And the correspondence that you received from the municipality?
Yes.
Supporting the project here?
Yeah, so we, yeah, there's a letter here from... It's a letter here dated October 24th from Lyons and Supple supporting the project that Mr. Stanger had talked about a second ago.
So that's on behalf of the mayor and the, and the council, correct?
That's good. So we have municipal support for, for the project as it goes, despite the not including the pilot. And it's good. I'll make a motion.
Would you make a motion?
I'll make a motion to support.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Jasmine, will you take the vote, please?
Brian Berrien.
Approved.
Jamie Facon.
Approved.
Tom LaCount.
Approved.
Mark Doyle.
Approved. That sounds like all approvals. Thank you.
That is. I shall leave while I have a hand.
Yeah, that's some report, that commoine. That was...
Very useful.
The way they broke it down.
I have to tell you, they did it gratis, which I really appreciate, so.
Oh, the second one, I'm talking about the fifth, the impact one that they paid for, I think 8,000.
Yeah, but this is the update they provided.
Oh, okay.
Good morning, Jacob.
Jacob.
Good, good morning.
Oh, great.
I feel like... My first day, I'm getting on all these steps.
All right.
You know, board meeting, I'm getting in all these steps. But this is great. This is great.
So this is item number C. It is the third item. It's for the consideration approval and authorizing resolution for the Arthur May redevelopment, the extension of the sales tax expiration date to December 31st, 2028. Would you like to introduce, well, first of all, we don't know each other. First of all, this is Robin Mack, new executive director, and perhaps you've already met, but...
We've corresponded, and I'm glad that you're here.
And you, would you like to introduce yourself?
My name's Jacob Rekis, born in Poughkeepsie. Been working on the Arthur May redevelopment project for, feels like my entire life. We're really happy. This has always been a community, intended as a community development project, which was supposed to be for all parties, a win-win. We're happy that we finished phase one, and now we're excited to get going on phase two, which had a slight delay because the financial markets just sent everything and all of our mortgage commitments into frenzy, but they seem to be getting back to a place where we can, we can actually, now we're excited to keep going.
And essentially, all Mr. Rekis is here for today is to ask for the extension of the sales tax exemption. And just to familiarize everyone with the project, this was an, you know, adaptive reuse. It's approximately 197 residential apartments, okay? With amenities and such and parking and, and that area, that Raymond Avenue area, that parking is essential. This is to create a walkable neighborhood, which is what you spoke about, for not only the residents, but also for the business people who will occupy the office spaces there, the commercial spaces. And that's, that's essentially...
Pretty good, yeah.
It. Is there anything else that we needed to add?
Thank you. The, you know, it has been a long time since we've seen the presentation and the plans and so on. And, and actually, maybe there are, well, certainly Tom has never seen those. So let's just describe the, the project a little bit. You've not set up for a presentation, but let's go back a little bit. So we're at the, at the school.
We're at the school. So the site is the former Arlington, was called the Arthur May Elementary School, although the Arthur May School name shifted. And so now they're still an Arthur May School at another location. The way we got into the project was that Arlington was downsizing and had excess capacity. So they said, what of their school properties would be the most advantageous for another use? And they identified this location, they put it up for auction. We were actually the second highest bidder, not the, not the highest bidder. And the first bidder came in with, we were told, all sorts of demands and said, if you don't do this, we'll walk. And they said, okay. So we got a phone call, do we want to engage in the project? The first thing that we did was we sat down with the school district, we sat down with the town and said, hey, guys, this is, I'm originally from Poughkeepsie. Our offices are in Poughkeepsie. So doing a project in your own town has, has mixed things, you know? The way we like to work is we want to do things in partnership. We did not want to get into a fight in our own hometown. So we said, tell us what you think the town and the community needs, and if we think it's financially viable, we'll go down that path. And so the idea was, how do we create density and a walkable neighborhood? The town comprehensive plan had identified that this neighborhood, the Arlington Town Center, was a downtown possibility, that that's where, we thought that, you know, if the town Poughkeepsie has a downtown neighborhood, this should be the place where people come to. And growing up here, this is where I would go, you know, I would go to the restaurants around Basser, and that's where I'd bring my friends when they would visit. So we came up with a design that took this site, which had been a school for 95 years and had been vacant for, by that, this was 2015, and for a couple of years, and came up with a concept that brought, that, that connected the walkable corridor on Raymond Avenue and brought commercial space on Raymond Avenue and brought as much market rate density as we could into the, into the site. So it's a 6.8 acre site. We designed it with a few phases, so we're building from the front to the back. So as of this point, there was a major discussion about whether the school building itself could be saved or not saved. I'll share a short moment. We had thought the school was gonna be eligible for historic tax credits, and it turned out at the very last moment that it was not eligible for historic tax credits. So we had to do a big turnaround. We're proud that we were actually able to preserve the school. And so right now, in the school, it's fully built, fully occupied with 25 lost apartments that are really cool and have ceiling heights of anywhere from nine to 14 feet, and they're kind of unique layouts, that they're pretty special. Up in front, we've built 39 apartments and five commercial spaces. Four of the commercial spaces are up and running and really great, and we're getting great feedback from the community that, that that's, people seem to be very happy with that. And so now what's left is 134 units to the, to the rear of the site, which, as was mentioned earlier in the meeting, is, you know, hopefully gonna help address a real problem that we all have. You know, I get phone calls a lot from people saying, hey, it's not a question of can we pay the rent, it's a question of, do you have access to a unit? Because we can't find a place to live here. And so that's something that we were excited to be able to do.
Excellent. Just following up on that, the discussion of availability of anything on the scale of top to bottom is a pretty vital discussion. And we've, we've had it before, as per the Duchess County Housing Report, that regardless of the fact that there's a dire shortage of affordable housing, that that shortage is quite affected by availability at the, at the top end as well. And, you know, we, we didn't discuss this in the, in the previous meeting, although we have on that same subject, this, this item that housing is a county priority.
Can I make an extra pitch? I just made it at a town board meeting. There's a book going around. It's called Abundance by Ezra Klein. And with the work that you guys do, which by the way, I was gonna say, I think is so vital, important, and thank you for what you're doing. It's a really nice summary from, definitely from one of the political spectrums, so I'm not advocating one side or the other. But he basically takes data and says, you know, policies that are created by government lead to results. And so we can look and say, this policy led to this, that policy led to that. And his primary focus in the beginning is about housing and saying, just globally, you know, if you say, oh, do we need affordable housing? Yes. Do we need marquetry housing? Yes. Do we need this guy? Like, choose the type of housing, and we need it. And so it's a great book for folks that are in this space.
Abundance by Ezra Klein, right? Very good. Any further questions?
No, we're not adding to anything. We're just extending. So I'll make a motion to extend the benefit period to, is it December 2028?
I'll second it. Vote, please.
On the count.
Approved.
James.
Approved.
My name is Berrien.
Approved. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck with the rest.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Elaine.
Melane is going to vouch for her numbers.
I'm going to wow you first with our farm brochure, which we just completed. This was a an update of one we did before the pandemic, and it was it was really a great process for our team to go through. Farmers, you may know, don't generally sit at their computers and wait for you to email them. So tracking everyone down is a challenge, and we're really proud of the outcome, showing Duchess County as a four season agritourism destination. I was able to present last week at the New York State Agritourism Conference, run by Cornell Cooperative Extension, and share some of the work that we do here in Duchess County with people throughout the state. So excited to have that out. The new updated craft beverage brochure is at the printer right now. And then the bike, the new bike tour refresh is in the last stages of editing. So we're excited to have those done this year. And then next year, we do our arts brochure that we have. But in terms of outcomes from the grid that you get, all the items, for the most part, have been achieved or exceeded at this point. Any that aren't are because there are things that happened in Q four. So working on that piece of that to make sure that we hit all those marks, which I expect that we will. On page two of our printed report there, just a note, our Instagram continues to to skyrocket. Everything else is very good. We've been using LinkedIn to great effect for our business support services. We just hosted our Awards of Distinction last week, where we recognized twenty two different businesses and individuals for the great work they're doing in the county to promote tourism and bring visitors here and give them a great experience. Just one note on the middle of that page, Meta changed their metrics. And so we had had reach as one of our outcomes, and we can't do that anymore. So it will report on the places where we can get reach, but we'll change that for next year to to be something that's different and and still meaningful to measure.
Was that something they had to pay for? I mean, I just wondered why they removed it.
No, it's just they're changing how.
Okay.
Because, you know, just when you figure something out.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, right, right. Different. So, you know, we we stay up to date and pivot where we need to. On page three, our website continues to see tremendous growth. We're over two million already at the end of Q three in terms of visitation. That's the highest that we've had. Our paid advertising did drive significant traffic to our website. You can see the calendar remains the most popular page, and the international visitors are over two hundred thousand in Q three. So the work that we've been doing with our training, our travel agents abroad, and doing the marketing that we do there is driving that interest for people to come get more information and then plan trips here still. The top spotlights that we have, pick your own apples, pumpkins, and more, number one, no surprise for Q three, as well as fall food, craft beverage, and harvest festivals. And then that first timer's guide to Duchess County. People are really embracing the tips involved in that. So really good work there. We promote, we have seasonal landing pages. So right now, you're going to do destination duchess dot com forward slash winter. And that's where you're going to find out about where to cut your own Christmas tree and where to see the great estates all decorated and your local shopping guide and gift guide and markets and all those kind of things are there. So those seasonal landing pages have been a great place where we compile those spotlights that give people that quick information that they're looking for. Q three, we had over a thousand events in Q three on our calendar. So no one should tell you there is nothing to do in Duchess County, because I would beg to differ. If you look on page four, a lot of great PR work going on, including articles from the New York Post and Newsday, as we continue to pitch our area to various media. On page five, our email marketing, our newsletters continue to exceed industry benchmarks. We have an industry newsletter, so our businesses can connect with us about upcoming training, any financing, any tips for accessibility, workshops that we're doing, all kinds of things are in that one. And that's, these are monthly newsletters and the visitor one, that one goes out to our consumer list. And then we have a newsletter also for our certified tourism ambassadors, which are over six hundred and eighty now. People have gone through that training in the county, benefiting more than two hundred and forty businesses. So really remarkable work done by our team there to get people on board with making sure that we're referring each other, supporting each other, and providing excellent experiences for visitors who come here. In terms of our advertising, we're continuing to see good results from our rebrand. And we are also, some of the videos on our YouTube channel, go take a look at them. We did one featuring the visitor perspective and and their testimonials here, as well as one from a merchant perspective and how our businesses are excited to welcome people and how they want to make them feel comfortable. That's that's one of my favorite ones. It went really well. And those run on not only social media, but also connected TV. So like Roku, Firestick Smart TVs, Hulu's, you know, those kinds of things. If you go to page six, then some of that international work that's being done, we hosted in partnership with I Love New York, Media Fam from a writer from Germany, who is on assignment for multiple different publications here, and then a trade familiarization tour from a woman from Italy, so she can recommend her clients. We are seeing increased Italian visitors. So that's that's been great. We also hosted Ed Finn from Ireland. He is a major TV and radio personality there, has his own travel show. And we, he featured Duchess County in an episode of each. So that was great to end. And he's been here before. We've had him here before. We get a great return with work with him. And then Dawn was just at Brand USA Travel Week in London, where she did a segment on air with him from there, too. So good relationship building there to continue to keep Duchess County top of mind. On page seven, I want to highlight our Trail Finder passes. There's over one hundred and fifty partners who are a part of those eight different digital experience passes. We've done paid collaborations with Go Love New York. In Q three, three hundred and eighty six passes were downloaded from twenty five states, Brazil, Canada, Germany, and Guam. The Zen Finder and the CIA Chef Finder continue to be the most popular of those passes. At the bottom of that page, group tours with our National Parks close and the NFDR Library for such an extended time, we worked a lot with our bus groups. This is the busiest time of year for them to be here. So fortunately, we also have state parks and private historic sites, and we were able to shift their itineraries within reason, because they have time limits there. They got to have their lunch at the CIA and all these other things that they're doing. Having the Si Blue right there was a great alternative for them, and they did a great job taking some of our groups, as did our other historic sites. So a successful adaptation, but glad to have them back open, because it's really important for for our county to have those. On page eight, in terms of agritourism year round, we mentioned in the brochure, but it really shines in the fall. Of the thirty spotlights that were written and published in Q three, twenty two of them promoted different types of agritourism experiences. And of the those thousand events, almost twenty percent had to do with our farms and agritourism. So a great time of year for all of our visitors coming to the county. On page nine, the Hudson Valley Film Commission, I had a great meeting yesterday with the new head of that organization. When working hard, they expect about twelve to fourteen features and series productions coming in Q one and Q two for next year, and then rounding out December of this year, which is excellent for our hotels. It's a little bit slower time for visitors. So having those productions from those hotel rooms during that time of year is fantastic. New Jersey doing really well with their films, where we're finding that they want to be in the Hudson Valley. So they are making some choices to be here, and we're glad of it. Those include scouting for The Diplomat, season four, its prequel from HBO for season two, Next Gen Chef for Netflix, hoping that they'll come back and do that again here, because it's been tremendous for us, especially internationally. People watch that and so well. Dawn, like I said, was at Brand USA Travel Week. So many people she talked to had watched it and heard about it and are excited to come to Hyde Park. So really great for us that they that they were able to do that. And you can see in the different blocks, the number of production days, how seven and a half million in spending in Duchess County in just Q three. So on on good track, three hundred film-related jobs, lots of good things going on in the film industry, finally kind of getting back after all those strikes and everything. Archman Hudson, page ten, you can see by the graph, more than half of visitors to all their events that they work with and promote and provide grants for are from people who live outside of Duchess County. Their biggest ones, La Galleaiza Festival in Poughkeepsie, fourteen plus thousand people come to that every year in the city of Poughkeepsie on the waterfront. And then New York Stage and Film Summer Season at Maris College, Jazz in the Valley in July on the waterfront. Berman Castle's been doing tremendous programming, Upstate Films in Rhinebeck, and then Wausau Project out in the eastern part of the county, all driving major visitation from outside of the area. And then lastly, on page eleven, just highlighting the Bardavon, their economic impact beyond ticket sales, one hundred and twenty eight thousand. And then they are doing a great job, their new director has been kind of updating some of their marketing tactics and tools that they're using. And then I just want to highlight also the great collaboration with Art at Bella Field, where they're promoting local artists that get to show in there, you know, as you come off the elevator and other places throughout the hotel, our local artists. And then those paintings and works have the ability to be bought, and the artist gets seventy five percent of that commission on that sale. So good things happening all over the county, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, I'd like to say, well, we've just Fishkill Farms just come out of the busy season of apple picking. And I was, several weeks ago, just, Melane had come to visit, remarking to her that the number of of Uber and Lyft drivers was extremely different and increased from previous years. I mean, it was to the point in the afternoons that, you know, every third car was was one of these, which is extraordinary. And within, you know, an instant response from Melane was, well, it's the Instagrammers. So, you know, this has an incredible impact to the promotion, whether it be, you know, counties' activities and certainly all the different businesses doing their own Instagram. It is remarkable what the impact is.
The more we can amplify each other's messages, the better. It is like, it can't just be our voice, but our voice has greater reach than most individual businesses. But when we work together, then it's, that's the ideal situation.
Good. Well, now.
Just reading one other thing, the the bed tax collections in twenty four, the target was four point one eight nine. You've already exceeded that for twenty twenty five. It's impressive.
Yeah, part of that is to the county increase their percent, but it's still higher than what that difference is.
How about Fishkill implementing their own? How does that affect?
That's a great question. I checked with the the county, because I was, I wanted to make sure that the numbers that they report to us are actually only their numbers. It doesn't include any of the municipal numbers in that, which would inflate it further. Because I wanted to know, are we looking at apples to apples here when we're comparing past? But it but it doesn't. That is strictly the county's number that they're collecting. We are still seeing people come. Occupancy tax or occupancy rates are up about two percent in the county, but spending is down, because people's budgets are limited. So if they're paying more because of additional taxes, they have less to spend in our businesses, and that's what we're seeing right now. So whether that will continue remains to be seen.
Fishkill has the largest number of rooms, I've heard.
Yes, they do. Poughkeepsie's not too far behind now with the addition of Home Two Suites and the Hartwood and, you know, those other properties.
So will we see a hotel tax for those municipalities as well?
See, it has one, too.
City or town?
Both.
And Rhinebeck is proposing.
And Rhinebeck is proposing. And now if census goes through, then Clinton wants one, too. All of them going to the general fund, none of them going to make improvements to the things that they complain about with visitors. So, you know, people complaining about parking and traffic and other things, but none of the funds at this point are to be used to make changes to that with more parking or transportation or whatever it is to to reduce traffic. So that's a concern and recognition that visitors aren't showing up by accident.
Tourism and I differ on on the data that actually suggests whether or not, how this impacts the community. And, you know, we don't, we don't do the big numbers of group travel in these these two towns. But giving my, even my personal example of going to Florida, I I will continue to go to Florida despite being offended by the number of taxes and fees that are on my rental car bill.
Mind boggling.
However, I am completely conscious of that on checking out or checking in. And what it ends up doing is it limits what I'm going to spend that day. Like, I will, I will maybe not have a drink, maybe not buy this shirt or whatever. And that will affect the small businesses.
Right.
And so you go to a town like Rhinebeck, and I don't, I don't care how much you're worth, you, these things do affect you. And and you will look at that and you will, that small extra amount of money that you would have walked into a shop and picked up something, you'll you'll refrain from having that extra meal or having that extra drink. And it does affect the smallest businesses. And I don't know that the municipalities have ever accepted and understood that.
Well, and you do see, too, and we can see from our data that you, we can see the difference between sit-down dining and fast food.
Right.
And how people, what that shift looks like, too, if you don't have, and especially for family travel, when you're looking at what those costs are. You know, our restaurants are are wonderful. Thirty five percent of all spending, all retail spending in the county, credit card slips, come from people who live fifty miles or more away, and twenty five percent of restaurants are more than fifty miles away.
But the point you're making is that there's a shift from restaurant eating to the fast food because of the cost.
Yeah. A percent, it's not all of it.
An economic time.
And that's certainly a factor, too, without a doubt. So it's something we're watching.
And the brochures are placed at?
Those, we have twenty information points all over the county. We distribute them by request by mail. We give them to all the farms. So if you want to swing by, I'll give you a stack to take. And then also at travel and trade shows and all farmers markets carry them. And so we we make sure they get in the hands of people who want them.
Great.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're back. Thank you.
Very good. So our next item is our own metrics.
Do you usually? No, I'm, no, I don't usually do, but.
I wasn't aware that I'm.
Your own board.
I think Renee usually prepares this.
Well.
I, I mean, has the notes down there.
Yeah, it's self-explanatory.
The third quarter.
Numbers. Good.
Okay, so. All right, bear with me, you guys.
Yeah. Right, so if we go and we start with looking at the third quarter outcomes versus the projected target overall, you can see in the last column whether, where we are to date, whether we're, you know.
Right, so we projected one for twenty twenty five and we hit two, correct?
Right. For the increase in jobs, we were projecting twenty, but as of third quarter, we're only at one. So, and that's probably with some of the projects that have not moved forward yet. The retention of jobs, we were looking for twenty as a target, and there hasn't been any movement on that metric to date for the third quarter. Increase in capital investment in the county, we have a target of twenty five million. We're currently a little bit over five million at five point one million. And looking to see if it's a known case for the reason. So that's related to, not sure what that's related to, construction jobs, one twenty five was the target, and we get to meet that.
So the next sheet is the Local Development, LDC, outcomes, which we've got, I think we should, we could, we could just leave those to the next meeting and skip over.
I mean, basically, you know, on the on the previous chart, if you go back to the Treasurer's Report, the the IDA had no fees.
Right.
So it's it's evident that there was no project. But so it's evident that there was no projects coming through. So any guestimates or projected targets for 2025 weren't met. Robust years versus non-robust years.
And one thing I just want to note is that you'll see on there, it says that a couple of these projects are pending. So while there were a handful of approvals this year, the numbers only get counted after they've closed. And closing has been pushed back for the projects listed here. So NRI Hyde Park is still outstanding, POU Development and Bill Parcel Seven.
So the numbers will look a whole lot better next year. By default, assuming that we actually succeed in finishing them. But, you know, what we can do is, we're all good with going through these files, but we have questions. If we don't, and I would include myself in that.
Okay.
Bring that up right now if there are any, otherwise we'll take your homework.
All right. Are there questions?
No.
No? Okay.
All great information for ensuring that we're on track or at least providing information for the board to know where we stand as far as our goals go. But excellent. Thank you for, now Renee would have put this together or who?
I believe, I believe Renee puts it together.
All right. So thank her for the work on this and we'll pay close attention going forward. So we have to make sure that we have our check signing lined up. And so we just need to have authorization. The difference will be, basically, to authorize Robin for certain.
Right, the only, the only addition is Robin. The others are already established, but we have to re-sign for the signature cards.
And, and that's a requirement by the bank when there's an addition or any kind of adjustment, any change to.
Yes, so I will have signature cards for everybody to sign against.
All right. But we should make a motion to that effect?
Yes.
I think, so.
All motion.
Thank you, Ron.
One second.
Tom Lookell?
Approved.
Jane Bacall?
Approved.
Brian Bavarian?
Approved.
Approved. Thank you. Now, not on the agenda, but there's some, a couple more items or at least one that I'm aware of, that I'd like to bring up. And that is that due to, well, it's actually a little hard to determine exactly what it's due to, but there was an error in the calculation of pilot payments. And the county has assessed a penalty, which is essentially to us because we take over the responsibility for paying the taxes in this pilot arrangement. So Ron, can you explain that?
Certainly.
It wasn't an error on the IDA's part. What happens is, is the pilot included Duchess County wastewater.
Yeah.
So that was included in the pilot, the project paid it on time and the special districts and, well, the town and the county were paid, all on time, within the agreement. The county and the town do not take special districts for Duchess County wastewater off their billing. They say they can't. So they billed also, which was an error on their part. So that invoice stayed open and the only way they can remove it is to have it paid. So there's penalty besides the payment, there's penalty. So what has to happen is the Hyde Park has to get the money back from Duchess County wastewater because they sent the pilot there. And then it has to be returned to Hyde Park, who in turn cuts a check to the receiver of taxes to clear that off. But the only way they can clear it off is to have the penalty. They issued a penalty, they cannot remove it unless it's paid.
And actually, it is an assessment by the town, the penalty by the town. And that, those funds actually physically have to be transferred from W to B to the town, to the receiver of taxes, to the county, and then back out. It doesn't make any sense. But we are, Don has investigated this, we've asked town council to look into this matter. It's very complicated. We know, we know how to fix this moving forward. The software systems are going to be updated. Unfortunately, will not reflect until 2027, but we'll be monitoring this transaction for 2026. Bottom line, this penalty has to be paid in order for the transaction to go through again. It remains outstanding for anyone doing a title search, et cetera. It became a problem Friday or so ago when they were closing. And we pulled off this effort to get the underwriter and the attorneys and everybody together on the phone within minutes to get them evidence that this tax was paid. I am suggesting, or the county is requesting that the IDA pay the penalty under protest, which will allow us to go back and probably waste more money to do this, but to try and recover this from the town in the future. I just, we want to clear the books.
So it's not a net zero, the town is not, even once it's paid, they're not getting rid of, they're not waiving the?
Their pilot, their pilot goes, the pilot goes to the town of Hyde Park.
I understand.
Yeah.
Net zero, we scrub the fee and the town's actually.
They can't scrub.
More.
That's absurd.
It's something we're going to bring to the town board, but we need to.
And the finer point of all of this is, we all work together.
Supposed to.
The pilot, the pilot, we have taken the position since around 2015 or 2017, somewhere around there, where rather than the IDA granting and treating them as exempt properties, we actually require one hundred percent of the special district money to be collected through the pilot process and then paid. And somehow or other, because they don't take it off of their rolls, saying that this is not exempt and there's a separate bill on all of that, it's mixed up. And you know that they got the money, it's not a problem. And so we believe that we're absolutely correct. We collect a hundred percent of the special district pilot payments because there was a time when we, the city of Poughkeepsie failed, who we let them collect the pilots. And it went on for several years and came back and found out they'd never collected it. I think it was related to Poughkeepsie Grand Hotel years ago. So we went in and resolved that and said, the only way to assure it is that we collect it, because we're doing the pilot collection anyway. So when we, when we made the arrangement that we would collect a hundred percent of these, and there's a question as to whether or not an exemption exists for those special districts. And the, there's an old State Board of Equalization and Assessment opinion says that we, we don't have the ability to grant the exemption. And there is a Supreme Court case out of Long Island, the only case that we're aware of that actually addresses the point and says, oh yes, we have the full authority to grant it. And for years, the old days, we did, we did grant them. And then we changed it at some point around 2015 and said, well, our policy is that we're not even going to get into that question, we're just going to collect a hundred percent and then pay it. So that's the process and it's been there. And you can try to figure out which way it's going to go. Effectively, it's the same thing, they get the money, but it's only because the town treated it as fully accessible that, and then the payment system didn't accommodate it. And it's really on the county side, in my view, that they could do something to waive that or the town somehow or other get that resolved.
How much is the fee? It's about $2,500. Is the town of Hyde Park, does it give us problems?
It is, but this is a eight-year-old pilot too. This started in 2017, didn't take effect till 2025. And I just think that we understand what happened this time and we're going to make sure it doesn't happen again. But the county is updating their system, which can't take effect until 2027 for collection. And we'll monitor it for.
The town board is saying you're not giving me back.
We haven't gone to town board yet, we've gone to council who is.
I've been dealing with the town attorney who, we've given a full memo on this.
Okay.
On how to take care of this. And he's looking at it and saying, I'll take a look at it. We haven't gotten past that point where it's gotten to the board and somehow or other affected a mechanism that everybody can be taken care of. In the meantime.
Pay under protest will allow us to go back and try to recover this with the town board.
So let's just be real clear with the transactions that have taken place and that are proposed. So working from now backwards, we're proposing to pay a penalty of, what'd you say, twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-eight thousand.
Eight hundred, seventy-two dollars and twenty-six.
Okay.
What project was this on?
T-Rex.
This is, yeah.
And it's the phase, phase one.
Phase one.
Which the T-Shainer also had the pilot.
Okay.
However, there's also the amount of the overpayment, right? Jane, the?
Those are two projects, the other projects, T-Rex, Shainer Hotel and Asai Shuso, both, they, they received the tax bill, they received their pilot and they paid their Duchess County wastewater from the pilot. They also received a bill from the town and they paid that too.
So double payment, so there's.
So those two, well, three, well, those two are being researched by the Duchess County wastewater because they were duplicate payments.
We'll see if we can impose a fee for that.
But and the refund, that.
The, and then to look at a different municipality, the town of La Grange, they billed 165 Overlook, forty thousand dollars for their Manchester water. Same type of issue, it wasn't taken off. So what they did was they sent the pilot piece that covered the Manchester water, they sent it back to the IDA. And the IDA returned it to 165 Overlook because they paid also the town bill.
Makes sense.
So this is.
So that was a nice move. It just went from, they reimbursed the IDA with that pilot piece, that Manchester water, and then it just went back to 165 Overlook.
This sounds all common.
But the other one, the only difference between all, among all of them is that T-Rex realized it was a hundred and forty-three thousand for the Duchess County wastewater. They didn't want to, you know, duplicate that one.
What also happened is that they were, they received a notice of delinquency, right? Early on and just ignored this.
In April. No, no, they, they received it from April, they received a notice from the bill that it was late, T-Rex, for the hundred and forty-three thousand. And they contacted the town of Hyde Park. I sent, I sent saying, we received payment, everything was fine. The town says, yes, we received your pilot, everything's good, not realizing that it's a receiver of taxes that's looking for the hundred and forty-three thousand. So that's why it was.
By them and resolved like.
It would have still though had the penalty because once, once it's one day late, the penalty is.
This is good, this is caught, so for 2026, we'll be monitoring it.
Yeah.
It will cost us more than the fee to go in and continue to discuss this matter, but I think it's, it needs to be cleared because right now it's showing that they are delinquent, unpaid if you do a search. So we just want to get that resolved. And again, doing it under protest allows us to go back and recover it.
And one of the things that we discussed was just going forward, our language in our agreements is flexible as far as whether the municipalities send out the bills or whether the IDA sends out the bills. And so we had just discussed that the treatment going forward would be having the municipalities or the special districts be responsible for sending out the bills for the special district.
This will be a huge burden.
For, well, for the Duchess County wastewater, definitely.
The ones that have, right, right. Because we haven't run into the issue other than La Grange.
Because town of Poughkeepsie does, they send me their water units and I do bill for the town of Poughkeepsie and they do not bill. So it depends on the municipality.
Well, this, this same item came up, of course, of the Jackson Crossing in the village of Fishkill too, in that the pilot was, because they're a village, the pilot was impacting their special districts, light ambulance, I guess. And they didn't feel that that was a fair reflection of the benefits they should give at all. So it does seem like in the process of re-establishing sort of a countywide program, we could actually look at that aspect as well because that would avoid that kind of discussion that may have.
That even gets a little more, you know, we go further into the weeds.
Absolutely.
Because the special district payments, we are now making sure that as far as pilot payments are concerned, we have been for ten years at least, we bill at a hundred percent. We don't grant any kind of special district issue. In the village of Fishkill, I believe what they were trying to say was that they don't treat their ambulance as part of, as a special district. Those funds are part of the general budget. And so it would not, it would be subject to the exemption, they would get the reduction from a pilot payment. And they were concerned, but when all was said and done, it didn't look like that was going to be a significant financial factor, it was very, very low. But it was raised at the time.
No, thanks for reminding me that was the way around. It was, it was a factor that was combined in there, general funds.
General budget.
So I don't know how you formally will authorize Jane and Robin to do this, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
I think we can just make a motion to pay the assessed penalty.
Under protest. So I'll make that motion.
One second.
Thank you.
All right, Tom Lookell?
Approved.
Jane Bacall?
Approved.
Brian Bavarian?
Approved.
Approved. Great. So have anything else you'd like? Should we adjourn this one?
We can adjourn this one, I have nothing to add.
Excellent.